Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our Tuesday, January 14th, 2025 business meeting. Before we begin, I'd like to invite up a dear friend and colleague, Pastor Jason Van Devere for the invocation. Jason?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for this afternoon. Lord, we thank you for your goodness, your faithfulness, Lord, in every situation. Lord, we always can count on and trust in you. Lord, we just ask that you would just come today, that you would be upon this, this meeting as we begin yet another year because of your grace and for your glory. Lord, we just pray that you would guide this time, that you would bless our commissioners and the staff, Lord, through each and every initiative and item. Lord, give them wisdom for your glory, for the benefit of people, all people, Lord. And we just pray that you would work in these days in which you, in which we live, Lord, that we would just see your hand in a mighty way. We love you, Lord, and we thank you. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. And before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege to honor and thank my friend and colleague, Commissioner George Teal, who served faithfully and well for this last year as the chairman of our Board of County Commissioners. We heard a little bit about that today, and I got to brag on him a bit, but I often say, you can't do anything, it's just one commissioner. And the good things that you've experienced in this community have been the result of that second vote. And oftentimes, that first idea where I get to be the second vote throughout this community. So I just would like to take a moment and recognize Commissioner George Teal. If you'll join me in a round of applause, please. I told you I was, I had flowery words for you. You knew that was gonna happen. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to going ahead and calling order today. I will call the meeting to order. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
You do. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda, and the board has appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Thank you. And do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none, sir.
Nor for me.
And I have none either. With that, we'll move on to item two, which is our consent agenda. Before we move forward with this, I'll ask if there's any citizen comment with regard to any item on our consent agenda. Any citizen comment? Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Chair, I do have an item on the consent agenda that I do have personal connection to. If it pleases the board, I would like to recuse from this vote.
And I will honor that recusal. Are you okay with that, Commissioner Van Winkle?
Of course.
Okay. With that recusal, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through AD.
Great. And I believe item AE is pulled from the agenda. Are you okay with that, your motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, sounds good. I will second that motion and Commissioner Teal's recusal. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 2-0. With that, we'll move on to item three for today, which is our regular agenda. And we'll start with item 3A, a resolution in support of President Trump, President Trump's immigration plan for the safe and lawful deportation of illegal immigrants. And the Douglas County Commissioners are presenting. I'll open it up to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and get us started off. I felt it was very important when we heard in November, the mayor of Denver talk about the fact that he would use police, he would use the power of the state to enforce through violence, the, his views against any actions taken by President Trump. I thought, first of all, I was appalled that we would hear that from a mayor here in the state of Colorado. But secondly, I was appalled because I do support President Trump. This is something I've spoken publicly on. I do believe his concept of deporting illegal immigrants who are conducting criminal behavior in the United States is exactly what we should be doing. We should not be trying to provide a home for those that are here to victimize not only our fellow Americans, but their own fellow immigrants. Most of the crime being committed in the immigrant community is immigrant against immigrant. When these illegal immigrants have been allowed into the country, they are still flying very much under the radar. They, they're not the ones, if something happens to them, public safety-wise, they're not calling the police. They are, I want to use the phrase mafia. I want to use the phrase reverting to organized crime in order to seek justice. Well, that perpetuates more crime. We're seeing it happening today in Aurora. Aurora has gone from being some sort of Trump fever dream that was dreamt up and is fictitious to now, we, we actually have hard data. We actually have judicial proceedings against illegal immigrants in Aurora that are doing the very things that have been accused ever since this summer. This is real. I believe that we should stand in support of President Trump, and I very much speak in favor of the resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I, I do appreciate that this is, I'm on the very first act that we're taking as a board today because I do believe it fits in with our overall mission, which is to protect the public safety of our citizens and also to protect the hardworking taxpayer dollars that they have entrusted us with to ensure that those resources are going to our citizens. And simply, at, at the heart of this is a restriction of our local law enforcement from being able to simply even communicate with the federal partners that may have information about other crimes committed in other municipalities or ties to human trafficking, drug trafficking, et cetera. And it simply is our voice saying we support communication between our local law enforcement and federal partners.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Van Winkle. I'll just echo the sentiments of my colleagues, who I fully support. We are holding the line in Douglas County on public safety and immigration. As the first Latino elected commissioner in Douglas County, I am deeply sensitive to those who are coming to our country seeking refuge. We are a county of compassion. That said, leading with compassion means we focus on those legal immigrants that are impacted most by the decision to be a sanctuary state. We know that illegal immigration has cost the state of Colorado $300 million, that candidly, it does not have. We heard a report just the other day that the state is down about $1 billion with a B. The money is not there to beckon people to a cold weather climate without resources. That is not a compassionate plan. And those legal immigrants that go through the time and effort to be, to be taxpayers, to document their process coming here, to go through the proper legal channels, are being penalized the most. It's well-known that Douglas County is deeply focused on victims' rights and the rights of those who have been impacted by human trafficking. We are deeply and unfortunately aware that the immigrant community is being targeted for human trafficking. And again, as Commissioner Teal shared, we have concrete evidence associated with the gang violence from illegal immigration in the Aurora establishment. This is not anecdote, and as elected leaders, we are going to live in the truth and be honest with you and not turn a blind eye to what's going on. Our citizens expect nothing less. Is there a commissioner that would like to read the resolution today?
If it pleases the board, Mr. Chair, I'll be happy to introduce it.
Yes, sir.
This is a resolution of the Board of Douglas County, of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, a resolution in support of President Trump's immigration plan for the safe and lawful deportation of illegal immigrants. Whereas the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners proclaim its support of President Trump's use of federal immigration and Customs Enforcement for the safe and lawful deportation of immigrants illegally in the United States. Whereas open and insecure border policies and local statutory declarations and laws have resulted in a mass illegal migration into the United States. And whereas this illegal immigration crisis endangers our community by permitting unidentified individuals, including those who seek to victimize the United States through violence and terror, transport dangerous materials into the United States to commit crime, and those who pose a contagious health risk to the county. This illegal, whereas this illegal immigration crisis lures uninformed or misleading, misinformed individuals, frequently women and families, into unsafe conditions where willfully or unintentionally unprepared communities lack the resources to address the needs of immigrants, resulting in immigrants frequently becoming the victims of human trafficking, exploitation, crime, and abuse. Whereas statutory state and city policies have cost Colorado taxpayers more than $350 million. Whereas the United States has a system for the lawful immigration of foreign citizens, including those former citizens seeking American aid in times of crisis. Whereas Douglas County recognizes the significant harm illegal immigrants cause, legal immigrants, by taxing government systems intended for legal immigrants. Increasingly prejudiced, negative generalizations and discourse, and diluting economic resources from which legal immigrants benefit. Whereas Douglas County supports the lawful presence of, and immigration of foreign citizens into the United States. Whereas during his reelection campaign, President Donald Trump expounded the dangerous state of immigration in the United States and his plans to resolve the crisis, including securing America's borders and the lawful and safe deportation of immigrants illegally present in the United States. Whereas political opponents of the president have taken formal positions stating they and the organizations they represent will oppose and hinder the president's immigration solutions. Well, now therefore, be it also known that Douglas County stands with President Trump in his efforts to solve America's immigration crisis. Douglas County commits its support and resources to President Trump and his plans to address the immigration crisis currently harming the United States. Douglas County joins and stands with state and local governments across the United States, including Castle Rock, Colorado, who pledge their resources and commitment in aiding President Trump in his work to solve America's immigration crisis. Douglas County joins and stands with state and local governments across the United States. Excuse me, I was about to restate that again. Actually, excuse me, I, I found my place for a second. Douglas County joins and stands with state and local governments across the United States, including Castle Rock and Aurora, Colorado, who identify themselves as non-sanctuary communities. Douglas County will actively oppose the laws, officials, and institutions that conspire to disrupt President Trump's immigration solutions and further the exploitation of immigrants and victimization of the United States. Douglas County represents President Trump, President Trump's immigration policies. Douglas County requests President Trump's immigration policies be implemented in Colorado, including Douglas County. And Douglas County requests President Trump end state and local sanctuary policies and laws across the United States, including Colorado. It is my pleasure, Chair, to introduce this before the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, Colorado, and thank you, gentlemen, for your patience.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any discussion among the board?
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to move the resolution to support President Trump's immigration plan that was just read.
Chair recognizes the motion. Is there a second?
There is absolutely a second.
An enthusiastic second from Commissioner Teal. Any further discussion?
Commissioner, we may ask for public comment, and we have two written comments that have been submitted to the board.
With that, let me open it before we do accept that action. Let's open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
I'm seeing a couple individuals here in the gallery. You're welcome to come up. If you'd just like to state your name and where you're from for the record, you're welcome to approach. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Patterson, and I live in Douglas County. What else did you want?
That's, that's fine, just your name and where you're from.
Okay. I'm here today on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Arapahoe and Douglas County. Many of our members live in this county. The League supports a system for individuals living in the country without legal permission to earn legal status. We do not support deporting these immigrants who have no history of major and/or violent criminal activity. This resolution does not address a concrete proposal and risks being misinterpreted and will likely lead to unintended consequences. Allocating resources, scarce county resources such as law enforcement, time, and funding to enforce federal immigration law, diverts attention from the local priorities like crime prevention, public safety, and community support. Immigration enforcement is a federal responsibility, and when local agencies take on these duties, it complicates the roles of local government and undermines trust in the community that they serve. We need to focus local efforts on community-based priorities. Supporting policies that respect judicial boundaries and addresses the root cause of immigration concerns will likely be more effective. Deporting critical immigrant workers will damage our economy. Undocumented immigrants in Colorado have contributed over $436 million to state and local governments. These payroll taxes support programs that they cannot access, like Medicare and Social Security. Colorado faces a significant budget shortfall this year, and the loss of immigrant taxes will, payroll taxes will hurt. Immigrants are an integral key to sectors such as daycare, healthcare, construction, and household services. Their deportation would create workforce gaps, slow economic growth, and affect essential services like childcare, healthcare, and infrastructure development. Immigration enforcement actions, including detentions and deportation, often leads to widespread psychological distress amongst immigrant families and communities. This atmosphere of fear and mistrust will seep into our wider community and destroy our social cohesion. Thriving communities depend on diversity and inclusion and leveraging unique cultural perspectives. Targeting immigrants as unwanted undermines these principles and limits the community's potential to benefit from immigrant skills and knowledge.
Ma'am, if you can wrap up your comments.
Okay. Balancing immigration enforcement and policies that acknowledge immigrants' contribution is crucial to fostering resilient and inclusive commitments. This proposed resolution should be rejected.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Julie Ward, and I'm a resident of Douglas County. And I apologize, I don't have prepared comments. I came here briefly. I just want to express my concern with this resolution. I have attended Aurora City Council meetings over the past couple of months. By far, there is no consensus on what needs to be done about the issue of undocumented immigrants. Some of the community members expressed that there aren't these issues that you are addressing as widespread as you are. I also question your resolution in that it has no specifics as to how you're going to lend that support. I'm not sure why Douglas County resources are being expended to another area where you're not attending their town council meetings, so you're not aware of what the issues are. There's no specifics as to what you're planning to do, whether that involves using law enforcement, what the specifics are. So I feel this resolution is by far too open-ended, may not represent the best interests of Douglas County. The statistics you cited have nothing to do with what, what any issues are with crime-related in Douglas County per se. So I just feel this is trying to make a political statement and is not appropriate and not specific enough, and I would ask you not to pass this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional citizen comment in the room? Okay. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay. And with that, I will close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or follow-through on that motion.
If it pleases the board, Chair, just to, just, just to make clear, in response to some of the citizen comments that we did hear from, the reality is, we do know of crime that is being committed by illegal immigrants in Douglas County. Whether those illegal immigrants are resident to Douglas County, they see Douglas County as a target. I would remind my colleagues of the briefings we have received from Sheriff Weekly, not so much the briefings recently, but I would cast our memory back. And Commissioner Van Winkle, I know you were not a member of the board earlier in the late summer, early fall. When Sheriff Weekly was briefing us of a task force that he had put together in order to combat crime committed by illegal immigrants, specifically members of the Tren de Agua gang, whom were, you know, committing crimes here in Douglas County, organizing car theft rings, organizing break-in rings, that since then, we know from our briefings by the sheriff, that the sheriff is now a part of a federal task force that is focused on Aurora. Anybody who says then, well, that's just politics. No, it's not. President Trump hasn't been sworn in yet. This is President Biden's Justice Department, who is working and trying to address these crimes that have been committed in our community, even though the illegal immigrants, as I believe was, was correctly mentioned, they may be residents of another municipality. Well, that doesn't matter. The crimes are being committed here. We know it. It's not supposition. It's not politics. It's not rhetoric. It's fact. There are people that have been incarcerated for those crimes right now in Colorado. And if you tell them, oh, those bars are just politics, they're just rhetoric, no, the bars they're behind are steel. They're real. And so the reality is, this is a problem. And listen, we can all throw the veil of politics before our eyes and look through rosy glasses at the situation and say, it's not real, it's not something going down. But there are real victims here in Douglas County that have been victimized by these people. They're your neighbors. They're people you probably work with. So I think this resolution is appropriate. I will just declare to my colleagues, I am more than willing to follow up as we see President Trump sworn in and his policies are implemented. I am more willing to address through another resolution some of the elements of this resolution that are not specific. And do not put a finer point on how we would dedicate county resources to joining the president in his, in partnership with the president to make his policies successful. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any additional comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I echo those words. Could say ditto, but I will say that at the heart of this is our support for our local law enforcement community, and we won't, as a Board of County Commissioners, with the passage of this resolution, we are sending a clear message that we won't be the ones gagging them and preventing them from working with other partners in law enforcement.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Winkle. And again, I would echo the sentiments of, of my colleagues. We're talking about facts today, and I'm not sure if anyone is aware of how many counties in the state of Colorado, large counties, that saw net migration in as opposed to people leaving this last year. The answer is one. The only county, large county, that saw net migration in was Douglas County. And there's a reason for that. People appreciate quality of life and safety in this community. And with all due respect to our colleagues from the north in Arapahoe County, they saw net migration out, and there might be a reason for that. We are deeply thankful to female voters, male voters, all voters, and we believe that the citizens of Douglas County that put us here are expecting us to hold the line compassionately. And again, the only way to really support and compassionately protect legal immigrants is to stop turning a blind eye to facts. And the facts are very clear. There has been crime from illegal immigrants in our region, and we're not going to be casual about that. And again, that's why we are here, is to support public safety and support our quality of life. Candidly, when we do that, our property values go up in Douglas County. People see appreciation in their homes when they invest here. Businesses want to be here because we prioritize their quality of life and their safety. So we're going to continue to do that work, and I'm deeply thankful for the support of my colleagues on this dais. Any further discussion? I will recognize the earlier motion unless you would like to make that again, Commissioner? Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. With that, we'll move on to our next item in the regular agenda, which is item 3B, an award of public contract for services and purchase order to DLH Architecture in response to RFQ 047-22 on-call architectural services in the amount of $400,000. Tim Hallmark, Director of Facilities and Fleet and Emergency Support Services, presenting for staff. Hi, Tim.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Heroes Hall Foundation was, has been fully established and is currently in the early stages of fundraising for the construction of the Heroes Hall facility to be located adjacent to the fairgrounds property. Critical factor for this project's success is development of a comprehensive site plan and construction documents to truly identify the real actual cost of the project and give them an actual real target that they're striving for. Currently, the project is estimated to be approximately $15 million to include all site development as well as the facility construction. The initial cost estimate was done with SOPC from Dave Hieronymus with DLH Architecture, who also has been doing a lot of renderings and development work pro bono for this project thus far. To advance this project along, we seek funding for a full-site development construction documents that we're calling Big PAC A, with a cost of $400,000 to complete those documents. We're joined by Mike McNary, the chairman of the Heroes Hall Foundation, as well as Chris Mays, Douglas County Veteran Services, and also a board member of Heroes Hall Foundation, as well as Dave Hieronymus from DLH Architecture, who can give details about Big PAC A if you have any questions.
Great, thank you so much, Tim. Anybody else would like to comment on the application today from your team?
Thank you, sir. I know you're aware of this, and I appreciate your support that you've given to this date. This is just a foundation that allows the American Legion, the VFW...
And sir, we are so honored that you're here. If you could just state your name and where you're from for the record.
Yeah, it's Mike McNary, I'm Matta Sidalian. So, and I'm the chairman of the Heroes Hall Foundation.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for your support. What we're doing is we're bringing the American Legion, the VFW, the Douglas County Veterans Monument Foundation, and the Douglas County VSO all under one roof, a one-stop shop for all of the veterans of Douglas County and anybody who may be coming through the area. We get those from time to time. People are traveling east and west, and we're able to offer all kinds of support, not just with the VA, not just with education, job placement, things like that, but a place of camaraderie for the veterans and their families to come to so they can reunite with fellow veterans and understand and be part of the community. So we appreciate any consideration you have for supporting the Big PAC A and the rest of what you've given us so far.
Great, thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it. Ma'am, any comments?
I think we're good.
You're good. Okay, great. Let me ask if the board has any questions for staff.
I'll just remind my colleagues, the Board of the Heroes Hall Foundation did select me to be the vice chair of the board, backing up the chairman, Mike McNary, who you just heard from. I, I'm sure you can understand that I have no questions, just because I've been on the ground floor. I will just assure my colleagues that, hey, there's a lot of really great work being done. Numerous members of the board stopped me at our last meeting to thank the Board of County Commissioners for bringing this under consideration. I can assure my colleagues that these are monies that will be well-spent in support of our veterans community here in Douglas County, Colorado.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. With that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none. Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
I have no online comment, sir.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So, with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
If it please the Board, I do have a motion to approve an award of public contract for services and purchase order to DLH Architecture in response to RFQ 047-22 On Call Architectural Services in the amount of $400,000.
I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion?
It's a, again, it's a big project, guys. It is my goal that we are going to minimize any further taxpayer input into this project. I know there may come a time when the Board would like to participate with further taxpayer support. Personally, I do believe that, again, this is to serve our veterans. So, an appropriate place for taxpayer support. But it is my personal goal to try to secure funding the remaining, really, it's $15 million, through private sources and private donations. We often have it told to us, and we have noted amongst ourselves, Douglas County is an affluent county. We do have capabilities that not all other counties here in the state have. And so, I do believe there is $15 million of patriotic money out in our county that can bring the rest in. But I could assure you, we very much appreciate the Board considering this contribution in order to really get the project moving, get it off the ground, all puns intended, and make sure that we can get it off to a good start.
Well, thank you for that, Commissioner. And I'll just say tremendous thanks to Tim and the team here, and a special thanks to Commissioner Teal. This has been a Commissioner-led initiative that you've really taken the bull by its horns, and we have not had a Commissioner that was a veteran for some time on this Board. And I think we are all deeply, deeply honored to have that representation here with us today, and certainly in the community. You all are to be commended for the great work. I consider it, no, there really is no higher commitment we could make than to those who have given all and to those who have sacrificed for our country. So, I'm honored to have been given the opportunity just to participate in this important project. And candidly, the excitement and urise, Commissioner, when you bring in the renderings and the new ideas is really fun to watch. You know, historically in the county, it is very rare for us to ever just write a check to anyone, and that is not the case here either. We begin projects and often ask for partnership and collaboration in the community. But I'm confident that the representations that Commissioner Teal made and that you all made today will come forward, and that we have a strong community that is very proud of veterans and is very willing to participate financially. So, I know we'll be waiting to hear back from you all soon. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. I will accept the motion.
If it please the Board, I'd like my motion to stand.
Okay. And we do have a second on the floor and no further discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you, Commissioners. Could we trouble you for a photograph with the team?
That is no trouble at all.
There's been so many today.
That's a new Commissioner hazing, all the bumps in the dais. Yep. That's a great one. So, with that, we'll move on to Item 3C, Denver Water Forest Deficits 3 Grant Award on behalf of the Colorado State Forest Service in the amount of $500,000. Joe Welly, Wildfire Mitigation and Resilience Coordinator, presenting for staff. Hi, Joe.
Good afternoon. Joe Welly for staff. And before you have the Denver Water Forest Deficits 3 Grant Award for the $500,000, this grant award will be allocated towards a partner project that we are involved with the State Forest Service on. This money is to offset costs for the privately owned owners in this partner project. So, State Forest Service requests that we act as a fiscal agent for this funding. Denver Water has historically invested a lot of money in wildfire mitigation and forest restoration activities, and they have partnered with State Forest Service and other landowners to complete the Greater Larkspur Project, a significant investment in southwest Douglas County. And by the opportunity to take this money and really allocate it towards this project really allows for seamless coordination and implementation of the Jackson and Garber Creek Forest Restoration and Watershed Protection Project. This investment builds on previously treated areas, protects significant values at risk in this really important transportation and watershed corridor, and it provides an opportunity to really enhance our collective action and investments in landscape resilience. That is all I had. This is a picture of a treated piece in this area. The picture on the right and the picture on the left is really a map of all the work that the State Forest Service and their partners have done in this Jackson Creek and those Jackson Creek Road and Dakin Road corridors. So, we're really excited about this opportunity. It's a great opportunity for investment in this area, and we're moving forward with this project.
Well, Jill, thank you so much. And if I could just take a moment to thank you. You've had such a successful year in wildfire mitigation and management. And, you know, on behalf of the county, bringing in dollars like this is deeply significant. So, I just wanted to express our gratitude to you and for your leadership in our Douglas County Wildfire Action Collaborative and all of the great professionals that join us in these wildfire mitigation efforts. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We really appreciate all the support. It's a very exciting time for wildfire mitigation efforts.
You know, I always say, "It's the good news you never hear," right? We just knock on wood. We were watching all these Southern California fires and are deeply saddened by the loss of property and life out there, and we have not had that. And people will never know. So, much of that is due to your efforts and the efforts of the leaders in this community. So, thank you. Any Commissioner comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Teal?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Jill, so the example on the right-hand side there, is that an example of the phrase we've heard of a shaded fuel break?
Not quite, but it's close. I mean, it's on a good location. It is in a strategic corridor. This is one of the cost-share projects that we funded last year up the Dakin Road corridor. The tree spacing doesn't quite have the separation for a shaded fuel break. A lot of times they're used for, like you've all seen, aircraft dropping retardant out where some of the retardant would have trouble getting onto the ground. So, typically, a shaded fuel break would open up the canopy a little bit more.
So, this would be another example of forest treatment?
It's a restoration, really, an understory treatment. This is the same mixed conifer type of forest we're dealing with with this project, a lot of gamble oak understory. So, really trying to get rid of those ladder fuels, create some separation, so beneficial fire, should we have it, can come in and move along the ground and support easy suppression operations.
Okay. Thanks. Those are my questions.
Thank you for those comments and questions, Commissioner Teal. Any additional questions?
No question, Mr. Chair. And I was able to see an example of the thinning efforts up and close in person just a few days ago, and it's good to see up close. It's good to see the proactive measures Douglas County is taking, along with our state partners, to ensure that if something does get started, a fire, it is able to be put out quickly and not overly fueled. So, anything we can do to reduce the fuels and potential hazards, the better. And so, with that, Mr. Chair, and recognition of the wildfire mitigation strategies that we do as a county, as a state, I will move...
And Commissioner, before you do that, I'm going to open it up for citizen comment, if that's okay.
Oh, sure. My apologies. I'm used to putting the motion on the table and then discussing it, but...
Oh, well, I know. It's the benefit of having an esteemed Senator from the state of Colorado joining us. So, I'll open it up for any citizen comment before we take action. And for us, we use citizen comment to determine whether or not we will make a motion or not and may inform that process. So, is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and recognize Commissioner Van Winkle for his motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I will now move to approve the Denver Water Forest Deficit 3 Grant Award on behalf of Colorado State Forest Service in the amount of $500,000.
I will be happy to second.
So, we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? You know, I will just add, I know Mike Alexander, our new Director of Emergency Management, often says, "One square mile in Douglas County is about $101 million in property values." So, I really applaud this Board and staff for working to protect that. It's a lot of family, pets, and property being protected. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 3-0. With that, we'll move on to our final item in our regular agenda, Item 3D, which is the adoption of an ordinance for the regulation of oversized and recreational vehicle parking for Douglas County, Colorado. Alan Stanton, Lieutenant, from the Sheriff's Office. Alan? And I am certain Dan Avery is not at the Sheriff's Office, but... Are you present? Who's presenting?
I believe that item is slated for continuance.
Yes, Commissioner. That item was pulled and is set for continuance after the Board has a greater chance to be briefed on the matter.
Okay. And I'm seeing that, yeah, Item D is pulled and will be heard on February 18th, 2025, at 1:30 PM for anyone that would like to participate or comment on that item. So, with that, I'll move on to Item 4 in our regular agenda, which is in our agenda, which is citizen comment and organization comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us, Board of County Commissioners. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making any comments. You will have up to three minutes. Obscenity and any comments that are calling for violent action or criminal activity are prohibited. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Is there any citizen comment? Yes, ma'am. And we know you. If you want to just state your name and where you're from for the record.
So, I spent last night in a hotel down on 16th Street Mall and doing lots of construction...
I might interrupt you. If you can just state your name and where you're from.
Sorry, Commissioner Layton. My name is Jill Campbell, and I'm from Highlands Ranch. I've been in Highlands Ranch over three years. Two things that are pressing on my mind mostly, and I pray for the people in California. That's a death in itself of a whole life lived and a reframing of an entire LA County. But my prayers are with them. I was down on 163 Mall, and I don't know if anyone heard, five days ago, a 71-year-old flight attendant from Arizona was murdered, stabbed on 16th Street Mall, and two other men stabbed. They've caught the suspect and have put him in jail. But more than that, they're doing construction, and it felt vacated, but more, as you speak about the things that are happening in our nation and the protection of our county and the good men that hold badges, and I say, "Take off your uniforms. The badge stays still on your heart." Gosh, they're so good here. So, when we have so many crises and our windows we look out and the roads we drive on or walk on, the streets, the sidewalks, they become the same, the routine. They're looking like you're looking out the same window every night, or the same door you open, and you only go through two. And it's real, what Abe and George and Kevin just passed with this resolution. And I hate to highlight myself, but I was in court. I was in 4E courtroom on the Denver Justice System in the Flanagan Building on Monday. And my lawyer did not, for $18,000, did not do his job. And for seven months, I asked him, "Are all documents in?" I will have to hire a new lawyer and defend against the irresponsibility of the lawyer to free myself from so much chaos. And so, at any rate, in October of 2023, I spent two days in the Denver County Jail. It was safe. I'd go through, turn, or I'd knock on their door, and I spent... So, I was jailed because I was at that Clarion and Radisson, but the Radisson was being renovated, and the Clarion was housing families that were going to be in the cold. And I have 14 seconds. My point is, I stood for those people. I paid a price, and I'm still paying the price, and the price is not the dollar. But the price is the ignorance and the naivety of most people in this nation, that what is true, they're human trafficking Colombian, Mexican, 13- to 16-year-old sex from 4:00 AM to 2:00 PM, to pay their bills and not be killed and smuggle guns into young boys' hands. And they're murdering because they're getting paid, and they don't want their families murdered in other countries. These are real issues. And I saw it firsthand. I was there three times. I saw the sorrow in eyes, and I saw the hope. And I prayed to God, as I always, my father flew that flag winter, summer, spring, a German-Polish immigrant son, and it was on our freezer and a new one in the spring, when it was torn in pink. Those tribes were pink.
And Jill, I want to thank you if you can wrap up your comments.
I will finish. And thank you. Thank you, men, because it takes men to move a country. Takes women to build men. We build good men.
Thank you, Jill. Any additional comments? Okay. Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment today.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So, with that, I'll close all citizen and organizational comments and bring it to the Board for Item 5, Commissioner comments. Are there any Commissioner comments today?
If it please the Board, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Well, today I got sworn into my second term as a Douglas County Commissioner, and the first words on my lips are words of thanks. Obviously, those of you who were present for the ceremony know that my first word of thanks went to my wife, my partner in life. I have no idea where I would be if I hadn't, if she didn't say yes about 31 years ago to marrying me and become my bride. But also, thank my family. But I did just want to take a second to pause and thank my colleagues. Abe, you've been a real partner, a good friend, confidant these last few years. I very much appreciate your friendship and your partnership as we've worked together for the people of Douglas County. Kevin, you actually, you were a friend and partner too, just happened to office in a different building. I can't tell you, Ben, how happy I am and just overjoyed that you're here and just excited for the four years that we're going to have before us, working for the people of Douglas County. You know, you and I talked often about why we're here, what made Douglas County great. Of course, you didn't have any choice of the matter. You just started here. But for me, it was finding a home of opportunity, finding a home of safety and security to raise my family. And so, I really appreciate the fact that you made it. You're here. You're officiated today too. And then, my final word of thanks, actually, before I give my final word of thanks, I really like to thank the staff here at Douglas County. Doug DeBoer, our County Manager, oft-mentioned, rarely-mentioned in public, though, consummate professional here, folks. The gentleman right to my left is just one of the very best civil servants in the entire country. I just can't think of anybody quite as good as he is. And Doug, thank you for your partnership. Thank you for doing, thank you for your stewardship in your job here in the county. I don't think it's well enough known how... And then, and then obviously, I got to thank you for listening, because when you asked me a question, when you demanded to know what I thought about a subject, you know, you gave me a chance to tell you from my heart where I stood on an issue, and obviously, it is without the vote of the people of Douglas County, I would not be here and have the opportunity to continue to wake up every morning and go to work for the people of Douglas County. I, I like to joke, you know, people say, "Hey, thanks, thanks for the good work, great job," and I like to joke around and tell them, "Oh, it's easy, it's a piece of cake. This is the easiest job in the world, it's the best job in the world." But the punchline of the joke isn't actually a joke. The punchline of the joke is, because I get to live here. And I do, and we do, and so I meant what I said this morning. I think Douglas County has an opportunity to lead, lead our country, lead our nation, show them what a unified people here in Colorado look like, and show them what we can do when we do it together. So thank you, everyone. Chair, those are my comments.
Very well said, Commissioner Teal, and you're far too kind. We're very thankful to have you back. Commissioner Van Winkle?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I will echo this and to mention it was a tremendous to be sworn in, really, for the second time in under a month, I believe. It's been a whirlwind for me personally, trying to keep my feet under me as a county commissioner, and surprised to have become a county commissioner in the month of December, and not for the first time this morning, but it's been fantastic working with our amazing team here at Douglas County, led by Doug. Does a fantastic job keeping us in line and trying to get us all the information that we've ever asked for and then some. Been incredibly impressed by the team here at Douglas County. We are blessed as citizens to have such wonderful folks running our government, in our government, going to work every day, from the folks that put on the badges and the guns, and also to our, the snowplow drivers and everyone else from the top to bottom that keeps our county running every day. My sincere thanks to my family, who's allowed me to run for office and serve the people of Douglas County, starting with the House Representatives in the Senate, and now these, I guess, chambers that I get to serve in here with my two colleagues, that I am very excited for a future ahead, very excited for a time of peace and prosperity, very excited for a time in which, when we are in the news, gentlemen, it will be for doing, highlighting the great things of our wonderful and amazing county and its people. My vision for Douglas County is a people free from overtaxation and regulation, and even more so, a people that are free from fear, that this will be a safe community for our citizens, that it will be a prosperous community for our citizens, and from the very beginning of our schools to the streets, everything, the people of our community will wake up every day feeling safe and secure, knowing that they live in Douglas County, the shining city on the hill.
Really wonderfully said, Commissioner, and, you know, probably felt like today's resolution was big, and it was, but our sense is that with you on board, many bigger things will, will be in our future. So thank you, welcome aboard. I just want to touch on a subject that has been on my heart for years. My honors thesis in undergrad was the economic impact of Mexican immigration on the politics of Southern California, and, you know, it pains me to, to hear some of the discourse about immigration in our community, because I recognize that there is such a compassionate heart to serve those in need, and I just want you to know that I, I share that desire. But when I think about some of the facts that we've been apprised of as commissioners, you know, we were really active on the human trafficking front and advanced a bill that thankfully Commissioner Van Winkle signed as a senator, voted in favor of, House Bill 1371, to allow for background checks at massage parlors, which are a hotbed of human trafficking. And there are massage parlors in the state of Colorado where the curtains are down and the open sign is on all hours of the night, and there are international females that don't speak the language, that are being trafficked and don't know they're being trafficked. It's the only way that they can survive, and they are living in these establishments. So with all due respect, we are not going to turn a blind eye to the marginalization of immigrants in our community and the victimization, and the best way to do that is to enforce the law and adopt policies that support them. So thank you for being here. I really do appreciate everyone's comments, and I hope you'll continue to join us in that discourse. For now, we are going to be adjourned, we're going to reset the room for our next meeting, but the next meeting for business will be held on Tuesday, January 28th, 2025, at 1:30 PM. We are adjourned, thank you.